Good afternoon, everyone. If you would, please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, good evening, everyone. As Superintendent of Schools, it is my duty and honor to preside over the special meeting for Board Reorganization as Secretary of the Board, as stipulated in Florida statutes. First, we will have the oath ceremony, which will include our newly-elected District Two School Board Member Alexandria Ayala and re-elected School Board Members Barbara McQuinn in District One and Frank Barbieri in District Five. Following the oath ceremony, they will each have an opportunity to make comments. We will then move to the organizational portion of the meeting, which will include the selection of the School Board Chair and Vice Chair. Once the voting is complete, I will turn the meeting over to the Board Chair, who will then preside over the remaining of the meeting. We are happy to have two judges here today for the swearing-in ceremony. The Honorable Kathleen Crowell from the Juvenile Division of the Fifteenth Judicial Circuit will swear in Ms. McQuinn and Mr. Barbieri. And the Honorable Ashley Zuckerman from the Trial Division of the Fifteenth Judicial Circuit will swear in Ms. Ayala. A huge welcome and thank you to you both. Will our three Board Members please proceed to the front of the dais, where you will join When you are ready, you may proceed.
We're gonna do one at a time, so who wants to go first? All right. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
The duties of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
The duties of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I'm now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution.
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And government of the United States and of the State of Florida.
And government of the United States and of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
Of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
If you wouldn't mind, please join me in giving our thanks again to Judge Kathleen Crowell and Judge Ashley Zuckerman for joining us today. I will now invite each of the newly sworn-in Board Members to make their individual comments. We will start with District One School Board Member Barbara McQuinn.
Thank you so much, Judge Crowell. That still gives you the chills. This has been a difficult year for everyone in Palm Beach County, our nation, the world. Those who know me well know that I love a challenge. And probably because of that, I feel so very privileged to continue to serve as a member of this school board, and I'm very excited about the work that we have to do.
At this time, we'll have Ms. Alexandria Ayala speak.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would first like to congratulate my colleagues, Board Member Frank Barbieri and Board Member Barbara McQuinn, on your reelection. Thank you to the entire Board for your leadership and to Dr. Fanoi as well as the district staff. I am truly humbled and excited to be a member of this body and to be serving with each of you as the next Board Member to have the honor of representing District Two. I would like to also extend my sincerest gratitude and best wishes to Board Member Chuck Shaw for his decades of leadership, commitment to education, and his tireless advocacy for our students in our schools. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Today's a very special day for me, for my family, and for our community. Palm Beach County is a special place to call home, and our schools are the bedrock of that special community. I am the proud product of the very schools this Board works diligently to represent. Being a Palm Beach County Public School graduate is a badge of honor that I wear proudly, and it's an experience that has defined my career and a perspective I hope to bring to this Board as we look towards the future. Today, I am grateful to join the rest of my colleagues in the mission of providing a quality, equitable, and safe education for our students while supporting the teachers and staff who keep our schools running. Over the last few years, I have spoken to many families and students. I have heard from our teachers, faculty, and district staff. I have heard from our taxpayers and business owners. And while COVID-19 has presented its own often new set of challenges on top of the day-to-day demands of running a school district, it's true that our schools here in Palm Beach County are not immune to the hardships facing our community. I view the challenges currently facing our schools as opportunities to improve, to innovate, and to ensure that we're providing the best possible education for our students, our leaders of not only tomorrow but of today, right now. I am committed to working collaboratively with each of my colleagues on this dais and the community at large to address the student achievement gap in our schools, to support our teachers and district staff now more than ever, to preserve and protect our fine arts and career and choice programs, to protect our precious tax dollars and manage our budget appropriately, and to ensure transparency and accountability in district decision-making. I'm here to learn, to listen, and to work diligently to make a difference. Together, I know we will continue building on the tremendous promise of success that is the Palm Beach County School District. I am just so full of gratitude today, brimming with it, and while I could say a million thank yous up here, I want to recognize some special individuals. To Judge Zuckerman for taking time out to be here today and celebrating this such wonderful and important day with me. Thank you. I've always admired you, and today's no different. The biggest thank you is, of course, reserved for my mom, Kelly, who is sitting here with us today, for her love, her faith that she instilled in me at an early age, and her support throughout this entire journey. I am here today because of her sacrifices, her strength, and her love. Thank you, Mommy. It means the world to have my Uncle Nelson and my Aunt Iris here with me today, sharing in this moment that none of us could have ever imagined, but that our entire family has all worked so hard for. Thank you to my partner, Rob, for being my rock, really a source of constant encouragement, fortitude, and light through everything. Thank you to our Classroom Teachers Association for putting their trust in me during this process. I see President Justin Katz sitting here with us today. I will continue to be an advocate for those who are on the front lines of our classrooms day in and day out, and know that you can count on me. And to the teachers who reached out to me individually to congratulate me on today, thank you so much. Thank you to our service employees and our district staff for all you do to keep our schools operating and top-rated. I greatly appreciate your support, and just know I have your back. Thank you to the business community, the community organizations, and elected leaders for your constant support and counsel. Gracias a mis amigos en el Hispanic Education Coalition por su apoyo, su amistad, y por su diligencia en la meta de mejorar las oportunidades ofrecidas para nuestra comunidad hispana y latina en el condado Palm Beach. Gracias, Joaquin. And a very special thank you to the voters of District Two, without whom today would not have been possible. They put their trust and faith in me and our shared vision for our schools. I do not take this responsibility lightly, and you have my commitment to always give you my 200%. Last but certainly not least, I want to take a moment to briefly address the history we have all made together. I am incredibly honored and proud to say I am the very first Latina elected to the Palm Beach County School Board. This victory is shared with every single member of our community, and I couldn't be more humbled and excited that we have achieved this milestone together here in Palm Beach County. Today, the work only begins. I understand the depth and weight of the position that we all hold and the trust placed in this body to see our schools in the right direction, never forgetting that what's best for our children need to always be at the forefront of every single decision that we make. I am here to serve you and to be your voice. My door will always be open, and I recognize that the best days are still ahead of us but only if we work together. I am committed to the work of this cause, and I am ready to get to work for District Two and for Palm Beach County. Thank you so much.
And at this time, representing District Five, Mr. Frank Barbieri.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. First of all, thank you, Judge Crowell, for taking the time to come here today. Very much appreciate it. I know you have a very busy schedule, so thank you for making the time for us. I want to thank my wife, Rita. There's days, especially over the last seven months, she's supported me. I've been on the Board now for 12 years. This will be the 12th year. And there are days when I don't see her. I'm gone in the morning. I come up here, and sometimes I don't get home until after she's already in bed, or I spend the evenings answering hundreds of emails and reading emails and phone calls, and she puts up with all of that. So I want to thank her for her constant support, helping me get through all the duties that I have as a School Board Member. I also want to thank the voters in District Five for re-electing me again. This will be the third time. I appreciate the trust they put in me, and I hopefully will show them that their trust is well-placed over the next four years. When I first got on the School Board back in 2008, everybody thought that I would spend four years on the School Board and then go to, as they put it, something bigger and better. I don't think there's anything bigger and better than being on a School Board where you can change the lives of children. I mean, what can be bigger and better than changing the future, making a difference for the life of a child that otherwise would be doomed to failure if not giving them a great education and making sure that they have all the tools they need to be successful adults? So in my opinion, there is nothing bigger and better than this. I had never had any intention of using this as a stepping stone to go anywhere else because the only thing you could do is step down from being on the Palm Beach County School Board. So I want to thank again, thank all of you for your support, especially the administration. I know sometimes I'm a little difficult to get along with. Sometimes my passion gets a little heated. My wife told me I should probably sit on my hands when that starts because it probably would calm me down. That Italian temper sometimes comes through. So for those of you that I might have offended over the years, I've tried to apologize when I do that, and hopefully you'll forgive me knowing that I'm just passionate about what I do here on the School Board. And again, I thank all of you for your support. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
If you don't mind, would everyone please join me in recognizing our new School Board Mrs. Bass, will you please call the roll?
District One, Barbara McQuinn.
Here.
District Two, Alexandria Ayala.
Here.
District Three, Karen Brill.
Here.
District Four, Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District Five, Frank Barbieri.
Here.
District Six, Marsha Andrews.
Here.
District Seven, Deborah Robinson.
Here.
We will now move to the organizational portion of this meeting by calling for nominations for School Board Chair and Vice Chair. The floor is now open for nominations for School Board Chair. I see Ms. Brill.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Mr. Barbieri to continue as our Board Chair.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, as there is only one person nominated in this race, instead of doing a roll-call vote, I will call the question. All those in favor of nominating Frank Barbieri as your Board Chair? Opposed? Seeing none, the vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Barbieri. The floor is now open for nominations for School Board Vice Chair. I must see Ms. Andrews.
Dr. Deborah Robinson.
Dr. Deborah Robinson.
Yeah, okay.
Any other nominations?
Ms. Karen Brill.
Ms. Karen Brill. Any other nominations? Seeing none, the School Board Vice Chair are now closed. Nominations for the School Board Vice Chair are now closed. The nominations are Dr. Deborah Robinson and Mrs. Karen Brill. Each School Board Member will cast one vote for their choice of School Board Vice Chair. The clerk will now conduct the roll-call vote, and following will tally the votes.
District One, Barbara McQuinn, how do you vote?
Karen Brill.
District Two, Alexandria Ayala, how do you vote?
Karen Brill.
District Three, Karen Brill, how do you vote?
Karen Brill.
District Four, Erica Whitfield, how do you vote?
Karen Brill.
District Five, Frank Barbieri, how do you vote?
At this point, I'll vote for Karen Brill since she already has four of the votes, and I nominated her.
District Six, Marsha Andrews, how do you vote?
Dr. Deborah Robinson.
District Seven, Deborah Robinson, how do you vote?
I'll vote for myself and move to make it unanimous. It's unanimous.
Yes, the winner for the Board Vice Chair, Karen Brill.
I am pleased to announce that Karen Brill will be the Board Vice Chairman for the upcoming At this time, I turn over the remaining of the meeting over to our Chairman, Mr. Frank Barbieri.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Board Members, I recommend the Board approve the proposed list of dates for the 2021 regular Board Meeting. Motion? Motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Ms. Ayala. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Board Members, I didn't take the opportunity. Thank you all for your trust that you put in me as the Board Chair. I appreciate that. Next item, I recommend the Board authorize the Board Chair and Superintendent to complete and execute the documents required by Florida Statute 1001.371 relating to this reorganization meeting, including a copy of the unadopted minutes of this meeting, and to forward and file them with the Florida Department of Education. Motion by Ms. Brill, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Board Member, I recommend the Board review and approve the list of School Board Committee assignments for 2021. And I also will take two motions. The first one is that one. I recommend the Board review and approve the list of School Board Committee assignments for 2021. You all have a copy of those. So the Board Clerk has suggested that we go down the list, and if there are changes, we vote on those changes. So let's go down the list together. The first one is American Association of Caregiving Youth. Ms. McQuinn had that, and Mrs. Andrews was the alternate. Are there any changes? Ms. McQuinn?
Yes, simply because I'm picking up some other duties, and I am at opposite ends of the county. I do have to say, though, that in resigning from that Board of AACY, what an incredible, incredible group of Board Members and what they do for our children who serve family members or people who live in their homes who are unable to care for themselves. It's a great, great group, so I'm hoping that someone else will step up and take that seat.
All right, Ms. Brill.
Thank you. And since I was actually a caregiving youth and actually raised my brothers when they were young, I'm going to step up if nobody else wants it.
All right, if nobody else wants it, Ms. Brill will be down. Mrs. Andrews, you were the backup. Do you wish to stay as a backup on that?
I'd like to give that up to someone new that might want to learn about that.
Dr. Robinson?
So if the criteria is having better caregiving youth, then I qualify, so I'll be the backup.
Okay, Dr. Robinson is the backup on that. We'll vote on the list after we're all done with all of them. Is that okay with the Board Clerk? Okay. Audit Committee, I'm down there. I've served on that for 12 years. I'd like to stay unless anybody has any objection. Mrs. Whitfield is the backup. You want to stay as a backup, Mrs. Whitfield? Center for Creative Education Board of Directors, Ms. McQuinn is the assigned Board Member for that?
No. Wow, that was very loud. Sorry. I served on it most recently, but that has been canceled since last year when they wanted to go down the route of having a charter school. Remember, that was that email I sent to you guys? So the whole thing just needs to be taken off because none of us can serve on that capacity right now.
Okay, so that committee has removed Board Clerk from the list. Children's Services Council, Dr. Robinson, you've been on that. You wish to stay.
I'd like to stay, yes.
There's no alternates allowed on that, so it'll stay that way. Communities and Schools, Mrs. Andrews, you were... Okay, did we need a backup on that, Mrs. Andrews? Community Alliance, Ms. Brill, you were listed on that.
I'm happy to stay with that, but the timing is not right, so we'll get an update. We had switched for a little while, and it's switched back now to mornings, so we'll get clear guidance.
All right, I know, Ms. Ayala, obviously you're not on any of these, so speak up if you find something there you would like to discuss with the other Board Member that might be already on the Construction Oversight Review Committee. I've served on that one for 12 years also. I'd like to stay unless anybody has any objection. And the backup on that is Dr. Robinson? Okay, Dr. Robinson? Council of Great City Schools, Mrs. Andrews? Dr. Robinson's a backup? Criminal Justice Commission, Mrs. Andrews? Cultural Council Board of Directors, Ms. McQuinn? Stay? You want a backup?
No, it's an ex officio position anyway, and frankly, most of their meetings conflict with our meetings, so let's just keep it just like it is.
Okay. The Institute for Cultural Advancement?
Same.
You need a backup on that one, or is that an ex officio position also? Ms. McQuinn?
I'm sorry.
Could you use a backup on that one?
Okay, I know I'm way down here. You're asking me what?
If you need a backup on the Institute for Cultural Advancement?
No.
Okay. Early Learning Coalition of Palm Beach County?
I'd like to stay if I can.
Mrs. Andrews, you're the backup?
I could continue to be a backup, but if someone would like to have it, you know...
I would be interested in serving.
Ms. Ayala, you'd like to be the backup on that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. Ms. Ayala?
Excuse me, Mr. Barbieri?
Yes, ma'am.
If we can, sorry to go out of order, but if we can just back up a bit, because I looked through to see where Mr. Shaw has been serving, and there really isn't anything much here for our newest School Board Member, would you be interested in serving on the Community Alliance? You want to go back and see the dates? Because I just don't see any openings other than...
Are you suggesting that you'll pull off of that, Ms. Ayala?
I would pull off if she would like to do it.
Would you like to be on the Community Alliance? I think the next one was Criminal Justice Commission. Did I already do that one?
It said Foundation.
I'm sorry?
We're on Education Foundation.
Education Foundation.
I'll stay on that.
Wait, I would love to make a plea to get it one year, Ms. Brill. I would really like to do it one year. I've been kind of waiting patiently for five years.
Well, I'd like to stay on it for now, only because, as you all know, I work, and it fits in with my schedule. If I'm giving up the Community Alliance, it's just easier for me because my schedule's a little bit more limited.
Okay, all right. Well, think about me for one year at least. I would really like to do it. I'm just, I'm hoping one day I can get it.
Amway's first at Palm Beach County. Ms. McQuinn?
I'd like to remain on that Board.
Is there room for a backup in case you can't make it, or are you the only one left still to be?
No backup.
Okay. The Federal Relations Network? Mrs. Andrews, backup is Ms. Brill? Ms. Brill? Are you saying yes? Okay. It's hard to see you through three panes of plastic here, so I got you. Finance Committee, Ms. McQuinn?
Yes, I'd love to stay on that. And may I take this moment to also, I don't think we've had so much on our agendas before, that I have been invited to represent our Board on the Florida Palm Board, and I'll bring a report back to you soon. I'm very comfortable not taking over for Mr. Shaw, certainly, because he's been there for about 10 years, but LeAnn Evans will be guiding me through that, so I just want to throw in there that I will be, I actually have joined that, and Dr. Fanoi has already welcomed me to the group, so thank you.
Florida School Labor Relations Services, FSBA Florida School Labor Relations Services Board of Directors? Mr. Shaw had that one.
Go ahead.
I would be interested in serving on the FSBA Labor Relations.
Well, I wasn't sure, since Mr. Shaw was that and the FSBA Board of Directors, that is a role I would very much like to take on, so I don't know if they are... I noticed the Legislative Committee is different, so knowing that, I'm totally fine.
Well, I just want to make sure that you know that I've been Mr. Shaw's backup, and it's now time for me to step up on the Board of Directors. I've been the backup for him for years, so I really am ready to step into this role. I've been to all the meetings, and I'm not interested in not being able to participate at that level.
So as we're fighting over Mr. Shaw's position, I'm totally fine with that. I'm just ready to move forward with some things. So I noticed that Ms. Andrews is on the Legislative Committee, and I don't know if we can bargain with that or going back to. I would love locally to do, I don't know if it was the Criminal Justice Commission or one of those.
Okay, I have one to give to you, Mrs. McQuinn, and I'm happy that you ought to do one. It's no longer called the Legislative Committee, and Ms. Brill has been working with me on that with the Florida School Boards for a long time. It's called the Advocacy Committee. I've been working diligently this year with them, but I'm certainly willing to give that one up to you so that you can get involved and learn and move forward.
So notice how well we have worked that out to be win-win, and that's great because then Ms. Andrews will be coaching me on what I need to do for that piece, too. Are we good?
Thank you.
Okay, so just let me make sure I understand for the Board Clerk. So Florida School Labor Relations Services Board of Directors? Which one of you decided you're taking that?
That is, I want to say it right, Ayala?
Ms. Ayala.
Ayala has that one.
She has that, and then Ms. Andrews is FSAB, the FSBA Board of Directors. May I be the alternate?
Okay. And then the Advocacy Committee, FSBA Advocacy Committee, that's Ms. McQuinn?
Yes.
And the backup is, currently Ms. Brill was the backup behind Mrs. Andrews. Ms. Brill, you want to keep that? Glades Career Readiness Roundtable, I don't think there's anybody but you, Mrs. Andrews.
I'm the superstar.
Mrs. Whitfield, you're the backup on that?
Yes, I'm happy to be.
Yes, stay.
Well, no, if Ms. Whitfield wanted, I don't mean a break by any stretch of the imagination. It's just that if she's picking up other things, I'm also very willing to serve as an alternate on that.
I'm sorry, Mrs. McQuinn.
I know.
I couldn't understand what you said.
If you want, you can be the alternate, that's fine.
Yes, thank you. Just for a minute.
Ms. Whitfield just said that she is okay with my taking that alternate position for the Glades Career Readiness Roundtable.
Let's be clear, I've never gone because Ms. Andrews is so dedicated. She does a great job.
Thank you.
But Barbara, I'll give you a chance to go. I really will.
I'm excited for it. Thank you.
Now we have the Hispanic Education Coalition of Palm Beach County, and I wonder who should probably take out?
I definitely will give that up. I definitely will give that one up to our new board member.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Ayala's got that, and the backup was Dr. Robinson? Want to stay there? Historical Society of Palm Beach County Board of Governors, Dr. Robinson and Ms. Whitfield?
I'm happy to give that up.
You're happy to give it up?
Happy to give it up.
I would be interested.
Mrs. Ayala's interested, anybody else? So we need a backup?
We need an alternate.
I can stay the backup.
I'm sorry?
I can stay the backup.
Stay the backup, Ms. Whitfield? Homeless Advisory Board?
I'm happy to stay there.
Ms. Whitfield was the one, she wants to stay. Ms. McQuinn, you're the backup on that? Yes? Intergovernmental Coordination Program? Mr. Shaw was primary, Ms. Whitfield was secondary.
I've never been, but I'm happy to go.
I don't know.
They do still meet. Anna Yaski coordinates, and I'm familiar, so I'd be happy to step in.
Okay.
So, and so that leaves Ms. Whitfield. Do you want to still be the backup on that? The Independent Referendum Oversight Committee is Ms. Brill, and then Mrs. Andrews is the backup?
Yes, Ms. Brill, I'd love to come to a meeting when you're not there, so let me know.
Surely, everybody's still welcome. Right now, we're doing it virtually, but, you know, as long as they know in advance, board members can participate, just like with Audit Committee.
Okay, so it'll stay that same, then Brill and Andrews, okay? Independent Sales Certax Oversight Committee, Ms. Brill and Ms. Andrews are also the first and second on that?
If Mrs. Ayala would like that, I would be willing to give her an opportunity for one of these.
This is for IROC?
ISOC.
ISOC? Sure, I'll step in.
Okay. Juvenile Justice Commission, Mrs. Andrews is the primary, Ms. Whitfield is the backup?
It's so great to go there. I love it. I've been there for a while, but you learn so much, but I will give it up if somebody just has to take it away from me. I'll be dragging, but I'll take it up.
What do you think, Judge Kroll? Should we let Mrs. Andrews be? And Mrs. Whitfield is the backup?
Happy to be.
Okay. Pine Jog Board of Directors, Mr. Shaw had that?
I'm interested in that one.
Mrs. Ayala would like that? I don't know if there should be a backup on that or not?
Doesn't say.
Pardon me?
Doesn't say we need a backup.
School Health Advisory Council, Ms. Brill and Ms. Whitfield had those? Dr. Robinson?
I'd be interested in serving on Shack if Ms. Brill is willing to give it up.
I can't hear you.
I said I would be willing to serve on Shack if you're willing to give it up.
I like serving there, but I'm willing to share. Just let me know when you can't go, and I'll go as your backup. But yes, you can have it.
So Dr. Robinson wants that, and Ms. Brill, you'll be the backup. Mrs. Whitfield was the original backup. Are you okay with?
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm good.
Okay.
Do you want me to do backup?
Technology Advisory Committee, Ms. McQuinn? Take Stock in Children, Ms. Andrews and Ms. Whitfield?
Yes, I'm a mentor. I love it. I've been on it a long time, but if someone just truly wants to learn, it's a great organization. I'd like to stay. So if I don't see anybody, I'll keep it.
You'd like to keep it?
I'll keep it, absolutely.
Ms. Whitfield, you were the backup?
Yeah, I'm fine. I can stay backup, or somebody else can have it.
I would like it.
Treasure Coast Work Group, Ms. McQuinn? That's up at your end of the district.
Yes, and I believe that Mr. Crawford is not going to do that anymore, but we can wait and check. So yes, keep me on that.
Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, Ms. Whitfield? You were appointed by the governor to that seat?
Yeah, a few years ago, but I haven't, it hasn't, I haven't been on it in a couple of years now. I feel like we should take it off and just, if I ever get through the appointment process again, it's pretty difficult to do, so I haven't been on since there was Governor Scott, so unfortunately, it's been a while. So I think we should just take it off completely.
Which one is it?
Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. Should we check with the governor's office and see if he wants to appoint somebody from the school board?
They really wanted somebody from Palm Beach for a long time.
So if he's willing to point you, would you, we wanted to stay?
Oh, yeah, I would, but it's like every year, it's just very low on their priority list to put that.
Superintendent, could you have Mr. Tierney check with the governor's office and see if they would reappoint Ms. Whitfield to the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council?
Yes, sir, we'll be glad to do that.
McQuinn is the backup on that. I don't know if the governor points a backup on that, or is that the way it works?
He doesn't, but he actually might like her more than me, I think. He might actually like her more than me as a person on there, as our one Republican representative, so, well, I'm happy to do it, though, if they'll take me.
Knowing that I live North County, I remember, I wanted to do that before, so if I can, I'd love to, whatever is involved with that.
All right, so...
And then I'm hearing Ms. Ayala, so maybe as the alternative?
I should be the alternative?
Sure, whatever you guys want.
I think it's an appointed position?
I believe it's appointed.
It is appointed. So you have to go through a whole application process, which I've done before, but then when the government changed, it took me off, and then I never got back on again, so I'm happy to try again. It's usually during session that they decide whether or not to appoint, so if Ms. McQuinn wants to try, I really do think you'd be more successful than I've been.
Okay, so it's changed a little bit, Dr. Fanoi, when he contacts the governor's office, it would be Mrs. McQuinn that we'd like him to appoint to that?
Mr. Tierney, please make a note of that, and we'll communicate with them, we'll take care of that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Ayala?
Ms. Brill would like to take over the Community Alliance, so I'd like to cede my role there and let her take over.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up afterwards, since Ms. Ayala has taken on a lot of the committees, I'll take back the Community Alliance gladly.
Okay, so you're taking back Community Alliance, and Ms. Ayala's coming back off? The Urban League of Palm Beach County, Dr. Robinson?
That should just be removed.
Sorry?
That should just be removed.
Removed? The Value Adjustment Board, I've been serving on that. I'm currently serving as the vice chair of the Value Adjustment Board. I'd like to stay there. There is, once a year, there's a meeting that lasts like five minutes. It takes me 45 minutes to get up there to County Commission, 45 minutes to get back, so I'd like to have somebody that's an alternate that would be able to go to that one meeting a year that takes five minutes.
I think I usually am the one who goes. I'm happy to do it again.
You've got it, Ms. Whitfield. And the last committee is the Wellness Promotion Task Force. Who's Ms. Whitfield, and then Mrs. Andrews is the backup?
I'm happy to be there still. I used to work in that group, so, you know, I'm very familiar with it, but if somebody else really wants to go, they can.
And I always work with Ms. Whitfield, and we work on a lot of them together, so I can be a part of that with her.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Andrews, I guess I just got old years. Are you saying that you want to stay as a backup?
I will, yes, absolutely.
So we went through them all. Does anybody want to make any changes before we take a vote?
I just have one question?
Yes, ma'am.
For the Value Adjustment Board, do we need a second alternate?
We can have a second alternate, because sometimes if Ms. Whitfield can't make it, I know Mr. Shaw would go sometimes to Ms. Whitfield, so would you like to be the backup?
I'd gladly throw my name in for second alternate in the event you can't attend.
All right, so we've got them all out. Anybody want to make any changes? We need a motion to approve it?
Mr. Chairman, before you make that motion, Ms. Bass?
You were going to add Greater Florida Consortium?
I'm sorry, yes, the Greater Florida Consortium.
Oh, I did actually speak to Mr. Shaw about that today. I would love to do that, if that's okay.
I don't see any other hands, so that's, so the Greater Florida Consortium will be Ms. Whitfield?
And is that everybody for the, is there a backup for that? Because I think we all are a part of the Greater Florida Consortium.
Yeah, I think we are.